It also provides recognition. That is long overdue to our asadids and their significant role in molding the Bangsamoro students. We thank our very own education minister Mohajir Iqbal and the entire parliament for making this happen. The swift passage of the Bangsamoro education code. Is a clear manifestation that we can overcome great challenges as long as. We put our hearts and minds at the task at hand as long as we work as one. I hope that the same level of hard work and cooperation will triumph as we pass the remaining priority codes in this legislative year. The government of the day remains devoted to the cause of lasting peace. During the past few weeks, there were initiatives to make sure that we stay true to that commitment. Several ministries joined forces in conducting the Bangsamoro Peace and Security Summit last month. The activity adopted a whole operation approach among key development players and stakeholders. For the speedy reconstruction and rehabilitation and development of conflict affected communities particularly in the so called. East S P M S box area in Magindano. We will make sure that the situation will not scatter and disturb the gains of this peace process. We are fully aware that there are few people trying to capitalize from this situation. To advance their selfish interest. The Bangsamoro has gone through so much pain and suffering already. And we will continue to do all means necessary not to succumb to the traits and imposed by a few. Let us all move forward to the path of peace. Last May twenty three, we also commemorated the fourth year since the Marawi Sea happened. To reiterate my message during the remembrance, tens of thousands are still displaced. And layers of challenges are piling on. Exacerbated by the ongoing health crisis. These painful experiences cannot allow us in any given day. To turn our backs to our Maranal brothers and sisters. This is the very reason why we have consistently pushed for the rehabilitation of Marawi. As part of our priority agenda and overall development goal. As of May twenty twenty one. The Marawi Rehabilitation Program has already approved. A total of nine hundred forty seven forty seven million five hundred ten thousand three three hundred sixty two. Word of projects ranging from livelihood assistance. Resettlement housing projects, healthcare services. Casts for work, water, sanitation and hygiene projects and other infrastructure projects. We have also recently signed a partnership worth four hundred million pesos. With the provincial government of Lano del Sur for the upgrading of the Marawi water system. That will provide adequate water supply for forty barangays in the city. We sincerely hope that these projects will help Marawi to regain its former glory. Cognizant of the fact that for us to bring the Bangsamoro to its rightful place. We need the strong partnership and commitment of our local government units to the social transformation. We envision. An example of such commitment was exemplified with our. Parasugpatan with the province of Tawi Tawi. Earlier this year, the regional government went to decide province to launch flagship programs. Inaugurate completed projects and provide update about our work in the transition period. We inaugurated the Regional Fisheries Research Center and Regional Farm in partnership with the Mindanao State University, Tawi Tawi. This collaboration aims to boost the fisheries, seaweeds and other wet market products. Which will translate to high income of fisher folks and seaweed farmers. In the long run, we envision Tawi Tawi to be the center of fishing industry in the region and beyond. At least twenty five million worth of health care facilities and health supplies which includes. One unit of sea ambulance, two units of land ambulances. One unit of disinfection chamber were turned over to I P H O Tawi Tawi. These are on top of the existing medical programs and assistance we have been giving to support. Our health workers. A total of five thousand arms armchairs. With around one thousand three hundred teachers kids, two thousand learners kits. And twenty two thousand learning materials were likewise turned over by the M B S T A. As we further improve the education service. Various infrastructure projects were also inaugurated such as the two story dormitory. To be built by the Ministry of Public Works in M S U Tawi Tawi. Four hundred housing units worth two hundred million for indigent displaced families. And returning Filipinos from Saba R E F S under the Bangsamoro Housing Assistant Program. Bahay program of the Ministry of Social Services and Development. We have also signed an agreement for the construction of one thousand housing units under the. Kapianan program. This is extra special as it this as the design of the housing has been tailored fit. To the needs and socio cultural context of the target beneficiaries. Ladies and gentlemen, these are just some of the major programs and projects of the farm for Tawi Tawi. Similar or equitable projects and programs are also in place for the other provinces in the region. We hope to conduct the same activity in these areas if certain conditions permit us. As the COVID nineteen pandemic that continues to hamper our everyday lives. Speaking of COVID nineteen, allow me also to share important updates regarding our vaccination program in the region. As of June thirteen twenty twenty one. Nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty one of the twenty one thousand four hundred fifty one. Or ninety two percent of our A one priority. The front line of health workers have already received at least first dose of vaccine. Forty six percent of them have completed their inoculation. The vaccination for the A two, A three and A four priority groups is ongoing. We have administered a total. Of fifty three thousand three hundred sixty five of the seventy eight thousand eight hundred shots available. We are assured of the continuous supply of vaccine as we work hard in reaching our target. Of vaccination at least seventy percent of our population to attain the herd immunity. We encourage everyone to get their vaccines as soon as possible. As representatives of various communities from all over the region, fellow members of the parliament. I ask that our continue. I asked that you continue helping us in championing the vaccination program. Because these are not just doses that can prevent COVID nineteen. But doses of hope that we may get back the life that we once knew. Our sincere appreciation to all our health worker warriors and other frontliner frontlines workers. For the for their services and sacrifices in this war against COVID nineteen. Maraming maraming salamat po, yazakumullahu khairan, may Allah reward you with goodness. Ladies and gentlemen, we are diverse group of people here in the Bangsamoro region. United by the common aspirations to address the historical injustices. Put an end to the various forms of violence and bring genuine peace and development. Through our right to self determination. This cannot be nigh overnight, but what we can do now. Is build the structure of governance. And pass legislation that will enable our children to live better in a Bangsamoro region we can. We can all be proud of. I earnestly ask the full cooperation. Of our colleagues in the parliament as we pass very important legislation starting today. On top of these priorities are of course the remaining codes. That we have to finish within the original mandate of the transition period. We shall work hard in passing the local governance code. That will further enhance the horizontal and vertical relationship of the L G Us in the Bangsamoro region. The electoral code, which is probably one of the most sensitive legislation. That this parliament will enact must be carefully crafted to ensure that we put premium. To the betterment of the electorate. We must ensure that it will pave the way. that it will pave the way for a genuine political exercise that shall serve the core of the regular Bangsamoro government. We shall transmit this to the parliament as soon as possible. The highly technical and equally important revenue code is being finalized by the Cabinet Committee laid by the Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management. Rest assured that these two will be transmitted to the parliament within the year. The government of the day shall submit to this august body a budget that is responsive to the needs of our people and will enable the region to overcome the pressing challenges we continue to face such as the COVID-19 pandemic. This will be the third time in which we will collectively approve a budget based on the black grant we struggled for, for us as part of the fiscal autonomy ambition in the Bangsamoro organic law and the comprehensive agreement on the Bangsamoro. It is important to constantly remind ourselves as we deliberate on this budget, budget that behind the figures, the figures are the blood, sweat and tears of our people. As such, we shall continue to allocate and spend them transparently and rightfully. I trust the collective wisdom of this parliament as we likewise prioritize laws for certain sectors of our society. We shall work on the legislation that will protect and promote the rights of the indigenous people pursuant to the intent of the Bangsamoro Organic Law. I task the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples Affairs to work hard and lead this priority. The government of the day shall submit to this parliament the Bangsamoro Children's Code that will further safeguard our children's rights. After all, what we are doing here in the BTA is for our children and our children's future. I trust that with the proven stewardship of the members of Social Services and Development who is also our Assistant Majority Floor Leader, this will be part as soon as possible. We shall also prioritize the enactment of Bangsamoro Labor Code that will protect the workers in the region and ensure that both the employee and employers will not be subjected to abuse and unfair treatment. This is even more important considering that the Bangsamoro is now services-oriented according to the Philippine Statistic Authority. But this is not to say that we will veer away from the other important aspect of our economy. We must continue to support our farmers and fisherfolks in providing them better opportunities and favorable conditions. We shall pass a law that will enable agriculture and fisheries to prosper. I task the Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Agrarian Reform to make this happen. We must take advantage of the generally better peace and security by attracting more investors in the region. As a matter of fact, in 2019, we were off to a great start when we were able to register 2.3 billion pesos worth of investments overarching our targets by 180%. It is just unfortunate that COVID-19 did not spare this momentum, but I am hopeful that by passing legislation that will further boost investment, confidence and incentives, we can put the region back on track. Islamic finance is gaining grounds in the world. Some experts even say that this is the future of finance and banking. We in the Bangsamoro must ensure that we make this potential a reality in our region alongside with the promotion of halal industry. As such, a comprehensive framework for the promotion and development of Islamic finance and halal economy in the farm shall likewise be prioritized in the succeeding months. Recognizing the performance of our local government units is vital in fostering an environment where innovation, efficiency and hard work are incentivized. I passionately believe that some of the best practices when it comes to local governance can be found in the Bangsamoro region. It is about time that we make this known and habit institutionalize for the year, for the years to come through a legislation towards this end, towards this end. It is widely known that the Bangsamoro is rich in energy sources. While we do have a ministry that has the primary mandate over this in the Bangsamoro, it must be further strengthened through a legislation that will enable the region to benefit from its resources with a sustainable and mutually beneficial framework. If done the right way, this can leapfrog the Bangsamoro to a progressive and developed region. We must also look into the existing structure in our bureaucracy as founded by the recently passed Bangsamoro Administrative Code. It would be worthwhile to pass legislation not to amend certain provisions of the Admin Code but legislation that would enhance or complement few of the novel provisions. Before I end this speech, I would like to share with you that although there are bureaucratic challenges along the way, the call for the extension of transition period has never been more resounding than now. The president and the leadership of ICNATE and the House of Representatives are giving us the nod that it will happen. We reiterate especially to the naysayers that the extension of transition period is never about power. It is about ensuring the successful implementation of the Bangsamoro peace process. This is not just the legacy of the MLF or of the UTM administration, but the legacy of this generation and a gift to the next generations of the Bangsamoro. Ladies and gentlemen, we cannot afford to fail them. We must do everything for the sake of the Bangsamoro and submit to the will and plan of Allah. After all, as mentioned in Surat Al-Fal of the Holy Quran 8:30, Allah is the best planner. وَيَمْكُرُونَ وَيَمْكُرُ اللَّهُ وَاللَّهُ خَيْرُ الْمَغْرِيْم But the plan and Allah plans and Allah is the best of plan. And remember, O Muhammad ﷺ When those who disbelieve plotted against you to restrain you or kill you or evict you from Mark Maqqa, but they plan and Allah plans and Allah is the best of planners. With all this being said, I hope that we continue serving our people with passion, sincere intentions and in remembrance of those who sacrificed for all of us. The Bangsamoro story shall continue and we are the authors of its most crucial chapters. Thank you so much to everyone and wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Allahhu akbar, Allahhu akbar, Allahhu akbar.
Assalamualaikum po, bapa.